Not exactly on time, but we will call. The Board of Supervisors to order. I would ask the clerk to please take the roll. I see that we got everyone present today. And at this point, I would call on Supervisor Bill Anko. Please come forward for the application. I would ask the body to please rise and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Morning.
Morning.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the refreshing rain. It lessened our fire hazard and washed the air. Thank you for bringing us here together again safely and for the privilege of self-governance. Again today, give us wisdom and patience to work together in civility and goodwill for our county and our residents. Protect and encourage the men and women who serve in military and emergency services. Help us to be patriots and good citizens. I ask this all in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
We join the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm glad we got to that part. Finally got over here. At this point in time, I would entertain a motion on the minutes from the previous session. A motion by hand to the second by Fisher. Any discussion on those minutes? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that motion carries. Today, we have no excuses. We have no resignations under appointments. I would like to take these together without objection. I don't see any out there. We have two of you Wood County Library Board, three-year term ending May 2020. Brad Hamilton, Lyndon Schmidt, Hugh O'Donnell, Dave Barton, and Joseph H. Zerflue. And in addition to the A D R C of Central Wisconsin, William Haskell. I entertain a motion to that effect by Supervisor Fire, a second by Supervisor Mahan. Any discussion? And all in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And again, that motion carries, so please put your hands up. Selecting. Public comment? Do we have any public comment today? David Fontaine would like to speak here for a moment from the board floor. Got to go right to the government.
At this time, I would like to thank on behalf of the American Legion and the schoolchildren for the government Youth Day. The kids had a great time here at the county. They especially liked the voting in the clerk's office. They liked blowing the horn over at the county highway shop. And they liked the dog in the sheriff's department. So they were real happy about it, and they talked about it for all day the following day after their visit. The only disappointment that they had during the day is that the county board was so efficient that they couldn't visit the county board in session during the day while they were here. So on behalf of the American Legion, the kids, thank you, and all the departments have participated.
All right, public comment. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, seeing that, we will move on. At this point in time, I'd call on Fritz Schuber, our county forester, to come forward. Fritz, the forester, why don't you come up to the microphone? Why don't you bring Mr. Grant with you?
Is this working? Where's the button?
In the front. And it should be green. You see the green?
Is it working?
Yes.
I don't do this a lot, really. So the reason I'm up here is to introduce Steve Grant to you. Some of you folks probably already know him. He's worked on the county forest since 1991. I've had the great pleasure and honor to work with him. There's really probably nobody who knows the county forest better than Steve. And really, I would say probably nobody in the history of the county forest either who's been such positive and good influence on the county forest, influential and just really does it all. Anyway, our committee would like to honor him. There's a letter we're going to present. It goes, Dear Steve, the Highway Infrastructure and Recreation Committee and the Wood County Parks and Forestry Department would like to recognize and commend you for your service to Wood County. We sincerely appreciate and honor you for a good working relationship and your dedicated service to the citizens of Wood County. Steve, you have displayed the highest example of character, ethics, morals, and unselfish service to your coworkers and constituents. On behalf of the Herb Committee and the Wood County Parks and Forestry Department, we want to express our sincere appreciation to you for your loyalty to the county of Wood and wish you much happiness as you begin this exciting new chapter in your life. Congratulations and best of luck to you.
Steve, would you like to say something?
Oh, sure. I really appreciate this. Thanks to Fritz, the county, especially to the Herb Committee. A lot of good years of working with that committee and on the forest. And I can't tell you how much I enjoyed the role of county liaison forester as part of my job. You're very fortunate that we've got a beautiful county forest and you got a great guy who's running the ship in Fritz. And over the last 14 years that Fritz and I have worked together, we've become very close friends. But I would say, you know, we didn't always agree with one another on how to manage different standards on the county forest, but we both respected each other and our abilities as professional foresters. And when we did have disagreements, we would talk it through, we'd come up with a compromise and move forward. And for two guys, both representing two levels, different levels of government, I think that's a pretty good accomplishment to work together as well as we did. So again, I would just put a plug in. Thanks for your support of the county forest program, the support of Fritz, and what happens out there, and keep it up because you've got a wonderful county of wood and forest out there. Thank you again. I'll enjoy my time.
You know, I've had the opportunity over the past 20 years to work with Steve. And it's always been a fantastic experience. And I'm going to steal the line I heard in a meeting earlier today that said Steve Grant might be the nicest guy who's ever worked for the DNR. And you're going to have to live with that when you go out. But it's true, whether he was dealing with the citizens of Wood County, whether he was dealing with other government agencies, I don't know a single person out there that isn't a better person for having worked with Steve Grant. He's done a tremendous job for us, done a tremendous job for the Department of Natural Resources in both a professional capacity and a personal level. So Steve, really from the bottom of our hearts, we want to thank you for all the service. You're too young to retire. We're going to miss you, but I'm sure we'll see you around town. Thank you so much. Today, we are going to have a special order of business. We're going to run that in sequence though, as we get to that part of the packet. And that will be presented by John Hokummer, the outreach director for the Wisconsin Counties Association. I think that starts at about page 111. So we'll start through the packet and we'll get there in as timely a fashion as possible. Taking us into the packet today, under referrals, there were three of those. They went to the appropriate people, Supervisor Rayner, to the state and legislative committees for their consideration. In the packet, page number six, the executive committee meeting minutes of Tuesday, April 18th, followed by the executive committee subcommittee on the Wisconsin Amazonics, River Lot Building, and Relocation and Mowing of Courthouse Departments. From here on, known as the subcommittee. Page seven, they've done a tremendous job. For those of you who have not had the opportunity to go over there, we have many offices occupied over there. They did this project on time, on schedule, and up to this point, the results have been fantastic. So I want to thank the committee. Their name's too long, but their minutes start on from April 26th, beginning on page seven and page eight. Any questions there? Again, take the opportunity to go over and see that building. The monthly report from maintenance on page 10, monthly letter comments from safety and risk management. Page 11, monthly comments from IT, and that's on 11, 12, and 13. The treasures report on page 14. Comments from the county clerk on page 15. Finance department's monthly letter comments on 16 and 17. Fairly lengthy here, pages 18 through 23, if anybody has anything there, 18 through 23, from the human resources department. And then with that, that brings us to page 24 and the first resolution of the packet brought forth by the executive committee.
This will be Resolution 17-5-1 to authorize the entry into an annual lease with Muppet Properties LLC for their parking lot. Fiscal note, rent of $2,300 per year plus cost for following the parking lot.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. I have a motion by Roser, a second by Bry. Discussion on this resolution. Any discussion on the resolution? Supervisor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only question I have is that it says on the fiscal note, rent $2,300 per year plus cost. I don't know why it's died, but it did. Oh, there we go. Anyhow, $2,300 a year plus cost, but in the referral, it said $2,000.
Inflation.
It just changed.
No.
No, no, it changed. Go ahead.
I know that Mr. Gascoigne has counted how many these companies have worked at the county.
Because there's also at the bottom of this, there is no negotiations. That's what I was.
Correct. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Grant. Peter, if you can.
Yeah, just ask.
Peter, there weren't negotiations on that aspect. They were charging their cost initially. It was projected to be about $2,000. That's what was put in the report. The actual costs, which break down into three components, one being their property taxes, one being their insurance costs, and one being the storm sewer costs came out to, I thought it was like $2,250 or something like that. And so that was the number that was that ultimately plugged in. So we didn't negotiate that. It was good patient as far as the county's perspective, I believe, and that's why the numbers were different. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Supervisor Hamilton, today answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Further discussion? All right, please vote. That resolution passed unanimously. Page 25 in your packet, this is the minutes from the interviews conducted by the Health and Human Services Committee on April 27th, and then followed by their regular business meeting, same group, pages 26 through 29, the regular minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee. Questions there? Pages 30, 31, 2, 3, and 4 is the monthly letter of comments or update from Director Bruin. 30 through 34, any questions there? The health departments' monthly update, beginning with Sue Conference, pages 35, 6, 7, and 8, 35 through 38. While I'm on that, I'm going to ask real quickly, it's in there, but, Sue, you are all moved in now to the River Lot Building. Correct. And you're ready for some of these supervisors to come up and take a look at your new quarters? Okay, sounds good. They did a great job with it. There were a lot of participation by staff, getting everything arranged up there. I was up there late on a Friday afternoon. I'm sure they worked through the weekend, but I want to thank you for the cooperation at that time. Report from Edgewater Haven on page 39. Veteran service officers' report on 40 and 41. Minutes of the Wood County Public Safety Committee of April 10th, beginning on page 42, and running through page 45, 42 through 45. Their minutes from May 8th, beginning on page 46, running through page 49, and 46 through 49. The central records committee meeting, April 26th, on page 50, 51. Community officers' report from the end of February to the end of March on page 52. Quarters monthly activity report on page 53. Various jail population figures and numbers, beginning on page 54 and running through page 58, 54 through 58. The community officers' report from end of March to almost the end of April on page 59. Again, the monthly activity report basically for those same dates for the corner on page 60. Sheriff Rayner had a couple of reports in here from various people in his department on some of the programs that are going on. The veteran informed his committee on pages 61, 2, and 3. You have the minutes of the security committee meeting on 64, 5, and 6. Supervisor Roser.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I assume this was Cindy Seepers, but who is Cindy that is on there? I thought that was kind of inappropriate that wouldn't last name.
Right. And I contacted, it was actually Cindy Jostin, the Cindy that they're referring to, and I contacted the taker of those minutes and indicated, you know, a little more explanation. You know, this is becoming part of the historical document. You know, you may know who it is at this time, but down the road, and most people don't know who you're referring to. So we had that discussion.
So we'll fill in. Again, the jail population numbers, 67 through 71, pages 67 through 71. Page 72, the seed committee minutes, committee third, that's on 72, 3, 4, and 5. Various Golden Sands Resource Conservation Development Council Inc. minutes, beginning on page 76, with their personnel and finance committee meeting minutes, and on page 87. So 76 through 87. Beginning on page 88 is the staff report, InnoJacy Gruber's, from planning and zoning. And the report runs pages 88 through 99. If we have any questions or comments, I'll answer those. 88 through 99. Beginning on page 100 and running through 104 is the monthly update from the land and water conservation department, pages 100, 101, 2, 3, and 4. Any questions there? Kiddies, the report from UW Extension, beginning with Peter Manley's on page 105, and run through 109, 105 through 109 from UW Extension. And that is going to bring me to, we have a resolution in the packet on page 111 that deals with PACE ordinance, but we have a presentation prior to that. The committee has obviously heard this. Some of us have probably heard this more than once, but at this point in time, I recall on John Hokummer. John is the outreach director for the Wisconsin Counties Association. Many of you probably know him from various roles he's played with the Wisconsin Counties Association over the years. He's former director of the insurance operations. He's a former county board guy. He is the mayor of Aurora. So he sits in many chairs, wears many hats, and is extremely knowledgeable on government at all levels. And John, I'm glad to have you up here today. I'm glad you could make the trip. The podium and the microphone is yours as you explain the page.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So it was a pleasure for me to be here, and I enjoyed my time of eight years. I served on the county board in Manitowoc, and now I'm in my 20th year on the city council in Verona, and my 12th year as mayor. So last night, I had a sit through one of those board of review meetings where no one showed up, but by law, you still have to convene for two hours. But I got some work done during the meeting anyhow. But thank you so much, Chairperson Plummel and board members, for having Jason Stringer. Jason is with WEC. WEC stands for Wisconsin Energy Conservation Corporation. And Jason's going to do the bulk of the presentation this morning. I heard about PACE, Property Assess Clean Energy, through the Green Tier Legacy Communities. I received a call from the League of Municipalities one day, and they said, we're having this meeting in Milton. We meet quarterly. And what Green Tier Legacy Communities do, it was formed under Governor Doyle. It was a five-year charter, and then it was renewed under Governor Walker. And basically, what Green Tier Legacy Communities is, is that you, as a community, as a city, as a village, as a county, you commit, you say that you are supportive of sustainability efforts within your community. And that means you provide as much or as little resources as necessary to the program. By the way, the city of Wisconsin Rapids just recently joined the program as well. So Green Tier Legacy Communities, some of the benefits of joining that are, if you don't have really good contacts at the DNR, you get a single point of contact at the DNR. So whatever issue that you might have, and if you don't know who the appropriate person is, you contact your person at the DNR, and they put you in contact with the appropriate people. Another advantage is if you are a Green Tier Legacy Community member, you also get preferential points on certain grants that are available through the state of Wisconsin. So not only do you get preferential points, you get, you know, a notification that these grants are out there. At a meeting that I attended, it was a joint meeting between Ozaki and Sheboygan County, the current mayor of Sheboygan, who's the former county board chair, indicated that they got a call from the DNR, and the DNR said, we have a grant that's going to expire today. The deadline is this afternoon. We strongly encourage you to apply for a grant. The staff spent two hours. They submitted a grant, and they got $80,000 towards an $800,000 streetlight improvement program. So there's some real benefits of being part of that. And then the quarterly meetings are held in member communities. So the only mandate from the Green Tier Legacy Communities is that on an annual basis, you must fill out this report that the DNR has, just stating what type of activities you have done in your community in the last 12 months. And the main purpose for that report is that you can exchange information with other communities in the state of Wisconsin. So we currently have 16 members in Green Tier Legacy Communities, and it continues to grow. Green Tier also has two subcommittees. One is on the healthcare side, and I'm not going to go into it this morning, but we partnered up with the DNR and other groups, and we just received a million-dollar grant over five years to take a look at what they call health in all policies. It's the type of activities that a city, village, county would put in place when you're looking at new construction or redevelopment of an area that creates positive impacts on the health of your residents of the county. It's a great program. People ask me all the time, where did the money come from? And when Blue Cross Blue Shield went public several years ago, they had more money than what the state determined they needed in their reserve. So that money was given to two different entities, and one of them is through the University School of Public Health and Medicine. And they can only, they give out the grants, but they can only expend what they earn in a year in interest. So that money will always be there, and we participated in that, and just some really exciting things going on in there. The second committee is, and I will get to PACE, the second committee is energy. And the energy committee, I sat in on a couple meetings and I heard about PACE. And with my elected officials hat on, I kept thinking, what am I missing here? This seems too good to be true. It is a true economic development tool that has no federal, state, or local dollars involved in the program. And it also, it's showing, and it's providing sustainability efforts within your community. And it's allowing, the only reason that the county is involved in the program is because the county has to pass an ordinance that we're going to talk about in just a little bit. But it allows the commercial property owners within your boundaries to utilize PACE financing. And Jason's going to go a lot into the presentation, and then we'll answer some questions. But we currently have 15 counties that are in the program right now. We continue to have conversations with county. I know Wood County is considering it today. Marathon County is considering it tonight. And I believe Ashland County is going to take action on Thursday evening. So hopefully, we'll have 18 counties in the program by the end of this week and continuing to grow. So with that, I'm going to let Jason talk a little bit more about the program, and then we will respond to questions. But it is something that we are really excited about, and I will tell you that WCA has done its due diligence. There were a couple things that when we got involved, we said, number one, because we're dealing with the public, we want to make sure that this is an open and transparent process. Number two, we wanted to make sure that there was no additional liability or workload burden on the counties, because if there was, we knew that the counties weren't going to participate. We wanted local lenders, if they wanted to get involved in the program, that they could participate, because we really believe that is true local economic development. So those are some of the things that are really important to us. So with that, Jason Stringer. I'll get out of your way for now.
Oh, sure. Sure. Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Jason Stringer. I'm John Allison with Wisconsin Energy Conservation Corporation, which is a 36-year-old, Wisconsin-based, not-for-profit that's been helping homeowners and businesses recognize the economic and environmental benefits of making energy efficiency improvements to their homes, businesses, and other sorts of facilities. So Property Assess Clean Energy financing is really an extension of our mission. It's something we've been working on for over nine years, eight or nine years, but more intimately over the last two years, we want to enhance. This partnership's been working on making PACE Wisconsin available statewide for that, seriously, over that period of two years. Started out early on the Fond Rees and Roper, which is the legal council with the Counties Association, the Public Finanz Authority, and a number of municipalities and counties across the state. Fond Rees has really taken the time on a pro bono basis to put together the ordinance, the resolution, and the joint powers authority that's before you today for consideration. And then after we developed that package, we worked closely with the Counties Association, legal with Wisconsin municipalities, to get their endorsement of the program and get their stamp of approval there. So this, and John's talked about other members of that partnership. I do want to mention Milwaukee. The city of Milwaukee is the one place in Wisconsin, prior to PACE Wisconsin, Milwaukee has a PACE program, and they've done some substantial work, economic development work in the city there. And we recognize that, and that's been part of the motivation for trying to make PACE Wisconsin available. In addition to Milwaukee, we've seen a lot of activity across the country. There are 33 other states across the country that have similar Property Assess Clean Energy enabling legislation. Those states as well have programs. I think Nebraska was one of the more, most recent states to pass enabling legislation. But you know, there are programs everywhere, from Dallas, Texas, Washington, D.C., across the whole country. So we saw that activity and said, okay, let's try to make this activity work for Wisconsin. We want to go to the next slide. So one of the great benefits of this program is that we've gotten firsthand experience in just how beautiful our state is. We've toured north to south, east to west. The counties here in Greene are the counties that have taken action on the ordinance and the resolution. They've opted to join PACE Wisconsin and make Property Assess Clean Energy financing available. John's talked about some of the activity.
St. Croix also.
Yeah, the maps, I'm sorry, the map's a little out of date. We were missing St. Croix County. There's 14 on there. So we're doing our best to keep up with that. So I want to talk just really quickly about what PACE is and how it works, and then I'll talk about, I'll go from that to talk about the program, which is really the joint powers authority and the resolution, and it's really the mechanism of the program that we use to administer things. But PACE, really simply, it's an economic development tool. It makes available low-cost, long-term loans to property owners so that they can fund energy efficiency, renewable energy, or clean, or water conservation, rather, investments to their properties. So the type of technology that we can fund with PACE loans is really any building system that has a utility bill or an energy component to it. So we can finance replacements of light bulbs, more efficient light bulbs, more efficient boilers, HVAC systems. We can even make buildings more thermally efficient, so we can finance high insulation roofs, new windows, insulation on the side, air sealing, and things of that sort. We can fund renewable energy, like solar panels. It's conceivable that It's conceivable that we can even finance agricultural applications. If there was an economic case for a digester, PACE financing could be considered as a source of capital to help fund an economically viable digester. And then we can also fund water conservation measures, so really any kind of low-flow fixtures or other kind of water conservation applications on a property. So it's got a broad application, and really, at the end of the day, it's a tool to help building owners reinvest in older buildings that have older systems that are out of date or not very efficient. Can also be used with new construction to help encourage property owners to build to a higher standard and build a higher-performance new building. Types of buildings that you want to, so the type of buildings that we can apply this financing to is really commercial buildings. So for right now, this is a commercial PACE program. This program's not eligible for residential 1 to 4 units. So it's really a very different program for residential PACE, so that's not part of our activity. So today, what we're thinking about is making these financings on retail buildings, office buildings, warehouse, manufacturing facilities, agricultural facilities. We do have the potential to use this tool to fund improvements to multifamily buildings, which is anything, you know, five units or more. We also can fund institutional and non-profit buildings as well. So why this, I think, tool is attractive to communities is, at the end of the day, it's an economic development tool. Whenever we can finance a project of this sort, it means we're generating local jobs. It's local contractors that come in and install the new systems. It's local distributors that sell the new boilers, the new HVAC systems. And even in the case of Wisconsin, we manufacture some of that equipment right here. So we're creating or reinforcing some of our manufacturers who make this equipment. We also have a very vibrant performance contractor market here in Wisconsin. We're professionals working across the whole country, doing the engineering to verify, justify these systems. So we're also reinforcing that local economy that's, you know, been a differentiator for the state. And clearly, you know, these types of projects are revitalizing building stock, creating high-quality buildings, which at the end of the day increases property values. So we're boosting local economies and potentially boosting the tax base as well with this program. The financing is attractive to property owners because it lowers their cost of operating a property. So at the end of the day, that transfers into lowering the cost of doing business in your jurisdiction. You can also achieve sustainability goals with this program that might otherwise go unfunded because of constrained operating budgets. And then finally, a benefit to consider is that this program is really voluntary from the standpoint of a property owner. It's really only those property owners that have a business case for using this financing. It would be the only property owners that would make any special charge, installment payments, or be affected by the program at all. So it's an opportunity that you're putting out there for businesses to take advantage of, should they find a business case. And then, from the property owner's standpoint, as we talk to property owners, we get a lot of excitement from property owners because they realize how unique this financing is compared to other options that they have available. If you consider a property owner that's thinking about replacing, you know, an old boiler and lighting systems, and doing a maintenance project or a repositioning project on their buildings, conventional financing is really only going to go so far. A conventional loan is going to be available for maybe a five- to seven-year term that needs to be fully repaid over that period of time. And there would be, you know, an equity contribution, you know, and those, you know, we compare that to a PACE loan, where, you know, we're able to fund 100% of the cost of the reinvestment project. We can fund that project over the life of the equipment, which can be 20 to 25 years. This can really lower the cost of the installment payments, so the debt service, bring down the cost of the debt service. And because we're installing energy-efficient equipment, we're also saving on utility bills. So one of the key components of the program is that those utility bill savings and the operating cost savings have to be equal to or greater than the cost of the investment. So by stretching payments out over a long period of time and enforcing that savings justify the investment, what we're doing is really setting up a situation for a solid investment scenario for a lot of commercial building owners that want to take advantage of the program. So that's really, that's, in essence, the PACE financing mechanism. That's the opportunity that this financing tool creates for the county. I want to talk really briefly about kind of the features of the program. It's really the ordinance that really considers the financing tool. The program and the resolution that you're considering is really, it's about joining with the Pace Wisconsin program, and I'll just kind of whip through a few of those slides, John, if you want to go. There you are. So WEC is a program administrator for Pace Wisconsin, and our role is to really make sure that the county experiences low to no burden from making this program available. So we take care of all the administrative work. We do this type of work. We recruit counties to participate in the program. We recruit lenders to participate in the program. We review projects to make sure they comply with the statute, the ordinance, and the guidelines. We also facilitate the repayment of a special charge. So we take, we ensure there's no administrative cost for the county. As I stated, there's also private lenders who want to make the financings available. So we have three lenders at our program right now. So there's no capital requirement from the county's standpoint. So this is a no-cost proposition from the standpoint of our member counties. We've done this in a uniform manner, so that every county that's a member of our program effectively has the same program, the same single point of contact. This is really important for scalability at the private sector. Property owners, contractors, and lenders like the notion that the program works the same all across the state. It helps them know what the rules are and know what's required in order to take advantage of this tool for their business. So we're a single point of access in that regard. Again, it's an open-market program, so we welcome any lender that wants to participate and make this financing available. They're welcome to come into our program. We have a qualification requirement that we have for them, so that we know who they are. But we're getting more and more interest from local lenders, and we hope to develop that component of our program here over the next few years. We do have three lenders available for property owners right now. And then finally, I think the whole investment proposition of each PACE financing is reinforced by putting the mortgage lending community in a position of control with our program. Our program requires that any mortgage lender that has a lien or a mortgage on a property that's considering a PACE financing, that mortgage lender has to provide consent and sign off that this is a good investment in the property and makes sense. We can't move forward without their consent. And we think that reinforces the proposition of each of these projects and the strength of those investments in your local economy. So I think, I'm going to wrap up. I just want to show the webpage real quick, if we can go one more slide. For more information about our program and to really gain access to the program, pacewi.org is a great resource. We've got resources there for property owners, local governments, contractors, and lenders. So we have 20 contractors, Wisconsin-based contractors that are already registered to the program, and looking forward to, you know, find work through this resource. The lenders are named there. We also have a portal to take applications, and there's ways to get in touch with us and get more information on the program. So thanks a lot for your consideration, and we're available if there's any questions.
I just wanted to add one more thing, not that we don't want to take questions, because we certainly will, is when Jason talked about some of the partners that are in the program, sometimes when you see programs like this, and there's a lot of partners, you think everybody's getting a little cut of the action, and that is not the case here. So we want to make it clear, WCA is doing this. We're not getting any commissions. We're not getting anything back from this. We just believe it's the right thing to do, and it creates local economic development, as well as the attorneys that are involved in the program. Fond Brison, as a law firm, they decided that they wanted to be a leader in this field, and they are doing all the legal work pro bono on this as well. So the only entity that is getting paid, anything at all, is WEC as a third-party administrator, and they only get paid based on transactions. So if a deal isn't made somewhere, a loan isn't made, they don't get a penny. To this point, they haven't gotten a penny at all for the program. So WCA, the league, nobody else gets any money of Pace Wisconsin. Mr. Chairman, we're more than happy to answer questions.
Sure. If there's any questions, for those of you who don't know who Fond Brison is, Danny Phillips, basically, who does the work. Many of you are familiar with Danny, but might not be with the name of the firm. Are there any questions? Any questions, John? It doesn't look like it. Can you explain it?
Thank you.
Okay, that brings me to, there's a whole bunch of pages there, their explanation of this evolving pack that began on 110, basically ran through 128. But the resolution itself, the ordinance, it's pages 111 and 112. I'd ask the clerk to please read that for us.
This will be ordinance 17-5-2. Adopt a PACE, a property-assessed clean energy ordinance, approve a joint powers agreement, and approve the appointment of a commission member, making Wood County commercial property owners, leases, and lenders eligible for PACE financing of energy or water efficiency improvements or renewable resource projects. No fiscal note.
Okay. I have a motion by Zerflu and a second by Clendanny. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Supervisor Anko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to request an amendment. We have a few words that we would like to have reviewed. And if you will go to section 14A, that is page 120 in your county packet, at the end of that first paragraph, there's a phrase starting in substantial form, and we are, I'm making a motion to amend and strike that last portion of that sentence. Jason assures me that that is unnecessary and should be deleted.
So how that, we found the page.
120, okay, in section 14A, the last portion of that section, from insubstantial form.
That was, I thought maybe you had more than one. I apologize.
No, that's it.
Okay, I thought you had several of them. All right, I have a motion by Anko to amend and a second by Curry. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? I'll do that. All my favorite amendments, either by I, opposed, and then on the carries. All right. I thought you had two or three. Thump it through here, wait. All right, back to the resolution as amended. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Any discussion? All right, I ask you to please go to the board and vote. Thank you. That resolution passed unanimously. I want to thank the gentleman who came up and made the presentations. I know that, as this gets rolled out across the state, there was some random reason as to how this was presented in the different parts of the state that they're working on, presented fully at a WCA meeting, but as they work their way around the state, I assume that at some point, I'll set the two counties for probably to be participating. So thank you for your time, and thank you for the patience and support to listen to the entire presentation. All right. Page 129 in your packet, minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee meeting, I'm eighth of, beginning on page 129, running through page 132, 129, 30, 31, and 32. Page 133, the Wood County Criminal Justice Task Force minutes of March 22nd, that's 133 and 134, signed and sheet on 135. We have a memorandum that came from Amber Peterson, a legal advisor with the Supreme Court of Wisconsin, pages 136 through 139. We have the monthly report to the committee from Corp Counsel Caston-Holtz on page 140 and 141. We have the Child Support Director Brent Ruins' report on 142. We have several notices of injury and claim, beginning on page 143 and running through 153, 143 to 153. We have another update, the May 16th update from Corp Counsel Caston-Holtz on 154 and And then that brings me to the resolution on page 156, brought forth by the Judicial and Legislative Committee.
This will be resolution 17-5-3, to add to County Board Rule 43, language that directs what is to happen with the funds obtained from the sale of county-owned personal property. No fiscal note.
Okay, you've read the reading of the resolution. A motion by Clendanny and a second by Hamilton. Any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion? I ask you to go to the board and please vote. We have a second resolution from the JNL Committee, beginning on page 177, running through page 158, and I'd ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be resolution 17-5-4, to encourage the state legislature to support legislation leading to sound groundwater management plans for all areas of the state, but in particular those areas including the central sands region that are currently experiencing quantity and quality issues from increased groundwater withdrawals. It's though nothing direct or immediate, but the long-term savings to Wood County and its residents by protecting the critical resource of groundwater is immeasurable.
I have a motion by Zerflu, a second by Clendanny. Discussion on the resolution. Supervisor Roser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question. You know, we've passed a lot of these resolutions over the months about clean water. Can somebody just explain to me what is different about this resolution than all the other ones that we have passed that just, or is this just a reiteration of our support of clean water? I just, I feel like maybe we've just overdone this a little bit, and I just wish somebody would explain to me how this is different from what we've done in the past.
Supervisor Clendanny, I defer Supervisor Lightman here. Supervisor Lightman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand your concern. I've heard it on the committee level. Golden Sands, which meets every two months in January and March, has looked at this, and what we've tried to do is to take the Wisconsin State RC&amp;D model of this recommendation to the legislature, and then produce that through the various central sands counties. I can't tell you how they're doing. This came from Washeera County. I know Portage County is considering it. We're looking at it today. But I think it's the way we have to go to protect both our quantity and our quality of our water, especially in the central sands. So you asked what's more specific about it. If you look at the last whereas, number two speaks to the WCA's legislative plan for this biennial. And so we recognize that, specifically number two. And then if you go a little bit farther, I guess on the next page, we reference coming from Judicial Legislative Committee, the legislation that was currently and, well, I think, in the future, come before the state legislature. We just need to keep them moving. It's been since 2003 that there's been any significant groundwater legislation in the state. It's been since 2003 that there's been any significant groundwater legislation in the state. Hope that answers your question. Supervisor Clendanny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm on the state RC&amp;D Committee and we've worked feverishly to get these resolutions to all of the other 11 RC&amp;Ds within the state. And we passed it and I was quite surprised that she, Washeera County, passed this and I got calls from some of the supervisors on there asking about it and I think we should have approved this. I think it gives another spot on it and it keeps the legislators going, as Bill had said.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Ashback?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have really no concern about it, you want to take advantage of me. It's almost a half an hour every seat meeting involved with this and we have a lot of important issues with the county that we just don't get time to cover because the days that pass along in there and so our concentration has been, oh, for years, on this one issue and I have important issues at home that we can't cover because of this, all this time consuming all the time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion on the resolution? Any other discussion? All right, please vote. Supervisor Lightman, you're the only one not in. I'm reconnecting. Page 159 in your packet, minutes of the Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee meeting in Thursday, May 4th, that's 159, 60, and 61. Beginning on page 162, the Park Construction Supervisors Report, various reports from the Parks Department and the Highway Department, beginning on 162 through 166. We have a letter there on 167, one of the things we discussed this morning in a special meeting and that addresses the flooding issues that we have along State Highway 173. And then page 168 in your packet, a resolution brought forth by the Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee.
This will be resolution 17-5-5, to become eligible for State Wisconsin Outdoor Recreation Grant Program funding. Fiscal note, $3,215,000 for grant-eligible portions of the Powers Bluff multi-use shelter building, entrance road, and parking lot.
A motion by Hamilton, a second by Ryd. Discussion on the resolution, Supervisor Wench.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not against developing Powers Bluff. I am concerned about a whole bunch of things that are, about how we're doing this and the one thing we're going to start off mentioning is that this grant is supposedly coming from the DNR. And I found out yesterday that their annual budget is about $550 billion a year, they spend about $75 billion a year on stewardship programs. And I'm going to say it again, that comes out of the left pocket rather than the right pocket, it's not free. That is taxpayer money. The other thing I think I'd like to have down here is that we should hold this vote up for another month so that everyone can get a hold of some of the information that I have that probably everybody doesn't have. And we can start off with this, the current debt that we carry right now, I asked for that from Mike Martin, I don't know, probably a month ago, it's like, well, January 27th is the reality. Anyway, our current debt, based on what we have barreled through 2017, is at 30 million. We're paying back debt repayment at 3.1. And if we go ahead with this project, and, well, before I even get to the master plan, I'd like to just say that every ski hill that I know about is operating at a loss. Now, when we get into the master plan that was presented by Schreiber and Anderson, it's about an inch thick here, this is what it looks like, that's the heat hill. There's also a summary sheet I'd like to have everybody get their hands on before we vote on that. And if this, 15 items, okay, but there's a couple in here that are very crucial for that are not listed, and this estimate at one time was $6,100,000. Can we afford this? See, now we have a new proposal that just came out at our last meeting, I've looked through that, and what that amounts to is that if this projected cost estimates and revenues, expenses, et cetera, and if this is all true, or if you can believe it, we would net about $50,000 in income. The issue with that is, and I talked to Mike again yesterday, we would be borrowing $3, 000,000 at 1% to 2% for 10 years and the payments annually would be $330,000, which means we would be going in the red, $180,000 a year on top of the already $600,000 a year that we're losing and have been losing for years. So if you add that to it, we'd be looking at about a $750,000 loss or a tax levy to support this. I think that everybody here should be looking at these numbers and then making a decision rather than voting on this today. And I know someone's going to say, if we don't apply for that $300,000, $2,000,000, somebody else will. My opinion, that's probably how governments get $19 trillion in debt. So I'd like to make a motion that we bring this back for a new vote after everyone has given this information. It would be a copy of the debt, a new proposal, a summary of the Schreiber-Anderson report, and whatever other, well, the debt information, and whatever else people need for information to make a decision. Thank you.
You've heard the motion by Supervisor Wench, I think your motion is to refer this back to committee. Is that correct?
Right. But make sure that every supervisor has the pertinent information so that they can make an informed decision.
I have a motion by Supervisor Wench to refer back to committee, I have a second to that motion, I have a second to that motion, I have a second. Supervisor Ashback, seconds? I have a second to the motion. All right, discussion on the, I want to check Supervisor Rosar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do agree that this is a lot of money. I wonder if it would be, if it would behoove us to have a presentation in front of the county board, kind of explaining this whole program and what the implications are and the financing that might be in order since it is a substantial amount of money with a pretty major project and I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to have a presentation so that we can be more informed about this.
Supervisor Clendanny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to talk about the amendments. I'd have been disappointed if I wouldn't have heard this. I haven't heard this, nobody else has got the report, that's, I'd say, false news. I was at the, up at Powers Bluff where there was presented. I mean, I'm not patting myself on the back, but I believe I was the only county board supervisor there. Nobody even from the committee was at that meeting in which this was discussed. I think it's a great thing and therefore I'm opposed to putting this off until everybody gets the financial background on this and have another meeting and things like that. I did have something to say about the original resolution, but this is speaking on the amendment and I hope you would not vote for the amendment.
Right now, just to clarify, I don't have an amendment, we have a motion to refer this to committee. Correct?
Right.
Is what we have right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're not wrong. All right. Any further discussion on referring this back to the committee, Supervisor Zerflu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Supervisor Rosar, it would be nice to have some more information for those that weren't privy to it. And if it pleases the chair, I'd like permission to go off table because Chad is here and he can supply that information.
Is there any objection of getting some information here from our Parks Director? Might be able to clarify a couple of those questions? Are you talking to the guys at timing on referring this back to committee or? I'm just trying to clarify where we're going, because we want to refer to committee, not the motion itself at this point in time, or not the resolution at this time. So are you looking for clarification as to why this shouldn't get referred? Ready?
No, sir.
Maybe we should vote on the motion first to get back to committee and then get back
to the original motion and then Chad could speak.
Yeah, once it's postponed, we'll be aware of it.
Your choices are basically this, I mean, you could refer this back to committee or more information will come forward. You can not refer it back to committee, debate the resolution, discuss the resolution, if it fails, it could also, for lack of information on the original, it could also be brought back by the committee the following month. So, I'm not sure where you want to go.
Well, at some point, I would like Chad to speak out.
All right, let me go to Supervisor Waggon here real quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some concerns about this that I wanted to express in just my experience with dealing with grants and public-private partnerships, and that's what we're looking at here. We're looking at, we're looking at basically putting the county out and saying, we're going to sign an agreement that we're going to supply somehow or another about 3.2 million for this project over the, to get it completed. And it says that the source of money is the Parks and Forestry Project, which will be supplemented with additional grants and donations of up to 50% reimbursement from the State of Wisconsin. Basically, this is dependent that that amount of a county subsidy will be reduced by whatever, whatever grants and donations we get. To my knowledge, and unless somebody can tell me differently, there are no commitments for any grants, donations, or anything else right now, so as it stands, we're approving a resolution that says we will supply $3.2 million towards this project if they get the grant, okay? So we're going on the hook for that thing. So what occurs to me is that the grants are chasing the donation, in other words, we're saying, we're signing on the hook to the DNR that we're going to do this project first and then we're going to go out and get donations for it. If we was the other way around, or at least there was a fundraising effort in place at this moment, I would feel much more comfortable about it because I would know that at least some portion of that 3.2 million was not going to be left to the county if we got the grant. So I'd rather see a fundraising, and the only reason I would support the motion to send it back to committee is to allow whoever is doing the fundraising, I'm not sure if it's Parks Recreation will be doing the fundraising or if they're going to hire a professional fundraiser or, I don't know, or, just blinding, so passing company, I don't know, but the point is that I would much rather see the fundraising effort started before we committed to that portion of, that $3.2 million or some portion thereof. That's, I'm not trying to be against the project, but I have experience with a project recently of which the city is on the, on the hook for $800,000, that, a project that is five years overdue, a project that we were supposed to be only paying a little over $200,000 for. So I'm a little, I would like to see, okay, in the grasses, the term, showing the money before we go for that? So anyway, that's why I would support sending it back to committee. Thank you.
Clendanny? I'll get, he'll get you a second. So if I can sum this up, and you can stop if you can, I think what I'm hearing from this body is, a number of you, to sum up at least where we are on this, who are to refer to committee, a number of you would like to see a refer to committee have some of this cash out, have a special order of business on the board floor with further explanation, that might be the one side of the issue. The other side is to move forward. Now, I think that kind of sums up what I'm hearing so far. Supervisor Hankel?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Supervisor Clendanny?
So Supervisor, in his presentation of this, he wants to send it back so everybody can, if somebody don't get a copy of what he's got there, then it can't come before this committee. I don't want to see that happen. If supervisors are interested in it, let them get that themselves. But I think his motion sends it back to the committee for the committee to give this to everybody. I'm, I think, what Supervisor, whatever his name is sitting next to you up there. I just can't think because I'm excited. I had, it's a fact that, yes, I'm concerned, since he got to talk about it, and I'm going to tell you my concerns of it. I've been to lots of fundraisers and things like that. I think we should get some money before we borrow some money or go for grants or anything. I think there should be something out there, that there is an effort from the public to do it and that's why I would like to see this postponed, but not for those reasons. Thank you.
Okay, so right now, let's get some issue sheets. We're dealing with a great emotional, generally refers this back to committee where additional information can be provided, I don't know that it needs to be extremely specific, and I think that the wish for what I'm hearing is that along with that, there might be special order of business scheduled on the board floor to explain the financing that is happening. Is that a fair summation, I think of what we heard? Okay, so with the motion on the floor then, to refer back to committee. Should I do that on the board? Let's do that on the board. So, is there any discussion on refer to committee, Supervisor Wench?
Is this still on?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a couple things, real quick. At the last meeting, I was given a new proposal, which I had not seen, had not, and we were, wasn't on the agenda, so we couldn't discuss it, you know, as an example. We take this back to committee, we should be able to discuss this and go through it and, you know, get some answers. The other thing that I didn't say that I was going to, is that, in my opinion, does not make any sense to borrow money on a board level, to lose more money. That makes no sense. Thank you.
Supervisor, can I give your hand up?
I think I got my question.
Okay. Yeah, Supervisor, is there a question? All right, so the motion of course is to refer this back to committee. I would ask you to please vote. 14-5. All right, I think we got some things for the next agenda, special business, Powers Bluff, so get ready for that. All right, page 169, in your packet, 169 begins the Minnesota Legion Disvolute Resource Center, Center of Wisconsin, the Finance Committee minutes on 169. Their minutes run through, includes, I think there were four meetings there. Any questions on ADRC? Central Wisconsin State Fair Board minutes, February 20th, on 173, and 174. Minutes of the Illinois Memorial Library Board of Trustees, March 15th, on 175, and 6. South Central Library System Board of Trustees, on 177, and 178. The Directors Report on 179, and 180. Minutes of the County Library Board Minutes, on 181, and 182. University Commission Meeting, January 19th, on 183, and 184. And just a quick comment there, I've got Supervisor Han in here, also Supervisor Rosar and Ryd, but where are we at in that construction project? Doug, one of you guys who hasn't, who's been up there recently and some of us have not.
It's, we're working on everything, we're building, so we're on the floor for, working on the outside, finishing the outside of the building and starting to work on the inside, finishing the inside. We have a meeting on Thursday in May, there is a tour scheduled for 5:15, if anybody's interested, show up and show you around the place.
Thank you. All right, anything further to come for the board today? Supervisor Clendanny?
Two, three, it's Saturday at the County Grand Rapids Garage in 28th and 2 Mile. It's a big event.
Is there more information on the Grand Rapids website?
Yes, there is.
I saw the flyer, but the information is there on the website also.
Correct, yes. Correct, yes, and hold a call.
Okay. If that is a bigger bag. All right, anything else? All right, next meeting scheduled for June 20th. This is when I would entertain a motion to adjourn, due by Supervisor Hamilton, a second by Fisher. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.